So it'll be right in here.
Recording in progress.
Yeah.
We'll hold it to the south. Good afternoon, everyone.
Okay, and then hold it towards City Council.
Monday, October the 14th.
You can show it back if you want.
Got it.
Get this shot on there. That's where the camera is.
Perfect.
Work session and a special meeting later. After the work session, we'll now come to work. And at this point in time, we have the work session to start with. We have item one, presentation from Dan Reed on International Building Code ADA Compliance. Item two, presentation by Kip Handen, L.L.P., J. Chimino on Development Plans and Projects. And item three, Land Use Code and Downtown Revitalization Strategy Kickoff, Setting the Guard and Rails by Michael Hirman, my role planner, LLC. And that's all for the work session. We're going to go ahead and get started with item one, which is presentation from Dan Reed on International Building Code. Michael Hirman, I guess you want to do an intro or something for us?
I'll introduce Dan. So we've asked Dan to come as part of the Housing Now. It says there was lots of questions about how ADA compliance was being reviewed. So I asked Dan to come. He is your building inspector that reviews commercial construction and reviews buildings. And just give a real quick 10-minute overview of what he's looking at when he does that. Good thing.
Thanks, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Mayor and council, good to hear and see you again. And Audrey, do we have the... Do we have the presentation up? We're flipping through. Perfect. We can put it on the presentation mode there. Okay. So let's see, we've got to go back one slide, it looks like. There we go. So I'm with Shams Code and Associates. Been with Colorado Code Consulting for a lot of years. And we got purchased by Shams Code and Associates. And so we do plan reviews and inspections for the city. And then as needed bases, mostly all of the commercial projects in town. We help out with that or any other project, special projects, as they may need our assistance. So we do that. I've been working with the city and with building department, Ken Robinson and Victor and others there for the last, I don't know, probably seven years or something like that. It's been a little while now. And I think we helped with some other code adoption and things like that some years back. But anyway, next slide. Regarding the question of accessibility and how it works with the code, and those are the three documents that are most often applicable. And that's the current adopted blue book there, the 2018 International Building Code, which is what the city's currently adopted, as well as there are 2010 ADA standards. And then there is the other little standard there, which is called Accessible and Usable Buildings and Facilities. So what a lot of people don't realize is that local building departments do not have the authority to enforce the ADA. The ADA is enforced by the Department of Justice. So it's enforced by the feds. And the way that works is typically somebody makes a complaint because they don't think that something meets ADA. And the Department of Justice looks into it. They probably have a local company come and do all kinds of measuring and looking and writing a report. And then they determine if it does or doesn't meet the ADA. And they would have the owner make changes such that it does meet the ADA. Well, that's all up to the Department of Justice. So you say, well, we don't have the authority to enforce the ADA. How does it get enforced? Well, we enforce the accessibility rules that are in the IBC and that are in that standard. And so those basically are the same thing, very, very similar in what they have. Now, you might ask about, what about accessibility in existing buildings? Because a lot of the city's existing buildings are what is going to be revamped, especially with this new program that the city's offering. And how does accessibility apply to that? And it kind of depends, you know, if it does or if it doesn't. First of all, we look at, is the building going to be a different type of use than it was before? And, you know, is it going to be changing? If it's not going to be changing, then it's the same use and a lot less is required. And sometimes people don't even alter their building. They just maybe close the doors one year due to hard times and open it up three or four years later, and nothing has to be done. So there are certain allowances for existing buildings. One of them is project cost. There is a 20% rule, as we like to call it. And that is that the code says you have to provide accessibility. You have to make things more accessible whenever you do an alteration, up to a limit of the cost, 20% of the cost of your overall project. So if you're going to spend $100,000 to refurb or something, the code would say you've got to make it more accessible up to 20% of that or $20,000 over and above your planned cost. And the thinking behind this is that they, accessibility folks, realize we're not going to force you to do everything in one alteration. But as the years go by and more and more alterations occur, the project will become more and more compliant as the years go by. So instead of putting it all on one project, it spreads it out. So some things are still required, some things aren't, you know. And the other thing is if it's labeled historic or if it's in a historic district. And we have one of those in the city of Trinidad. We have an historic overlay zone. And so things inside that historic overlay zone would have even further exemptions. Not everything, but more things that we would look at and that the code would give some benefits to for being historic because changing things in a historic building can be really tough. You might have columns in the way. It might not be technically feasible to do everything that you would normally have to do if it was a new building. So basically, just keep in mind that ADA usually applies to new buildings. It does apply some to existing buildings and even less to existing historic buildings. So we have to, when we do a plan review, we look at all of those things and determine, okay, what is this? It's historic, all right? Or, you know, what is the depth of the alteration they're doing? Are they adding more units in a residential situation? Or are they just going to fix up the ones that they have? So all of these kind of weigh into what requirements there would be. Next slide. Oh, that's backwards, going other direction. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No, you were right, and that was my bad. So during the plan review process is when we start really looking at what the designers have turned in on the plans. We do a thorough review of the plans based on the code and the standards there for accessibility. And we make sure that the plans say certain specific requirements that we know are going to be there for accessibility. So they have to reflect those things. If they don't, we write a correction list and they change the plans and they come back showing that. And then when we're out in the field doing the site inspections, we want to make sure that the building actually matches the plans and that other things too, that maybe worked on the plans because there are minor details, that those things comply. So that's part of why you have experienced folks doing the ADA or accessibility, I should say, review and making sure that the small details also comply. So some of the possible requirements that are needed here, and let me move something out of my way. Okay, is... You might have to improve the accessible rep. So if somebody wants to refurbish some of the maybe upper floors of their building, and a lot of them have maybe marked until on the first floor and have some residences up above. The first thing you have to do is we need to be able to get people into the building. So they might have to fix the threshold at the main door or maybe the back door if they can't do it at the front door. And so there are things like that. Maybe if it's a very small remodel and the 20% cost, of course, is even smaller, then there's just some simple improvements like adding lever handles or a few grab bars into a bathroom or maybe widening a door. If they're spending a lot of money on their alteration, then the 20% would obviously be greater. And so they would have more requirements to bring up to speed, you know, their building. But you know, always, owners are always responsible for removing anything that is, has become a barrier to access. Basically, staying up with the ADA, even though the ADA is being enforced by other people, the owners would still be responsible for seeing what they can do and doing that. Sometimes you get a break in a historic building where you would just add a family-use bathroom instead of changing some existing bathrooms to being all accessible. So the codes have allowed a lot of different alternates or options that they could use as opposed to having to rip out huge parts of old historic buildings and lose the historic charm and the value that is there definitely from decades gone by. Think I've got another slide. Basically, with accessibility, we look at all of the aspects of what the building is, what the scope of the alteration is. And we're very careful about making sure that all of the accessible rules are going to be followed. Everything that is required in the building code for accessibility and in the standard matches the ADA. And the architects and designers are also doing that. And so the plans and the job get verified throughout the whole process that whatever the code requires for that type of building and that type of alteration, it's actually getting done. And we feel it's very important. Let's see, questions? I think I might have seen one pop up. Okay, not at this time. If there's any other questions, let me know.
You know, I do have one. You were talking about the old buildings. You know, in an old building, for instance, and all of a sudden, as they're tearing down, and you come up with an item that is possibly an ADA issue, what is the process to get that taken care of? Who identifies that? How is it remediated so that they can move forward without slowing down the construction?
So tell me a little bit more about what you're saying. Is there's already a permit for a building?
Yes, let's say there's a permit for a building and you have to widen the door. And you start tearing out, decide to widen, and all of a sudden you create it. You find a historic piece of metal that's in there. How's that remediated?
Well, if you've got a building, when we issue the permit, we know that it's a historic building. So we have a plan right from the start as to... The designer shows us what he's going to do and we determine if that's a nod for or that was spelled out correctly. And we see the plan and how they're going to do it. So we know right away that you have something historic and we know what historic rules are regarding that.
Well, if that really answers my question is that what do you do with that particular issue? If the door is, let's say, you've got to make a 36-inch wide door and when you tear out the side of the wall, there's only 33 or 34 inches, and it's a historic piece in there, how do you go around that? Because that's one thing that could happen, especially in Trinidad with all the historic renovations. I'm just...
Yeah, well, it could be that the door needs to be widened and it could be that it doesn't. So we would know when we do the plan review what the requirements are. They don't always have to change the existing bathroom to be accessible. They might be allowed to add a smaller, single-use, you know, family or assisted-use bathroom instead. Or if they know that we're going to rip out this bathroom and remodel it, then they're prepared for that. When they look at their plans and realize this bathroom's going to be altered, so we're going to rip the door wider and reframe it and make it work. So they know ahead of time right from the start. Maybe I'm not understanding what their specifics are, but there's no, shouldn't be any surprises because we've looked at it on the plan review from the beginning. We know what they're doing and we know where their 20% cost is allotted because that's all been discussed in the plan review. So their 20% might not even be ripping a door out of a bathroom and making it wider. It might be fixing up the threshold to the front door or might be adding some grab bars to a bathroom. You know, all of that would get analyzed and discussed before they even start.
Well, things, things crop up along the way and we really didn't answer my question. But go ahead and move forward, please.
Right, things pop up along the way. So the building department's always available. Phone call away to say, hey, we've discovered something. What's the best way to work this out? Then I'll say, well, give me a little sketch of what you're looking at. And the designer and I can look at it together and determine what's the best course of action.
Okay. And I guess the big question is how quick that can get remediated, you know, so that they can move forward without holding up the construction project?
Right, well, everybody's, you know, always, we don't want to hold up construction either. So we try to look at it in a short time period. And it hasn't been an issue as far as I'm aware.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Go ahead. Did you? Yeah, go ahead. I was just going to ask, is the city using your services for all of the Housing Now initiative projects?
They're using us, well, most of them are commercial. And we typically do all of the commercial for the city. But so if a project comes in as part of this downtown project, then they'll send us the plans and we will do each of those unless they want to handle it themselves. But typically, yes.
Okay, well, I'm just glad that we have your services available. I'm sure it's complicated and, you know, it's something that it's great to have an expert involved in to figure out how it can be done and how it can be cost-effective. That's all I have.
Yes, glad to be of some service. Thank you.
Good. So we did a housing incentive program where we're helping especially downtown residential apartments and lots and things like that. So these people that came before us, would it be wise for them to get your consultation or first before they start those projects?
So maybe I can jump. Sorry, Dan. So we...
Go ahead, Ray.
Well, just, we did do building inspections while I was myself in camp.
Okay.
And we determined that, the purpose of that was to determine whether or not a building permit threshold was going to be hit. And if it was, then the owner has to submit plans and at that point, Dan is involved. So we did do that pre-app with each of the applicants ahead of time. So and in all the cases, they were required to do building permits. There was one that was kind of on the threshold of not, but they decided not to apply. Because they had some...
I'm just trying to clarify in my own mind what the process is.
Yeah, we built that into what we did currently ahead of all those applications coming in. So we made sure that the applicants knew that they would... And that's, I think, a couple of the things that we're seeing on kind of the application, you know, the slur coming in, is that they're working with their design professionals to get the plans drawn out before they submit cash or money.
Hey, Dan, do you let our building department know, depending on the scope of the project, when you get those plans, how long it's going to take to turn around your information to be able to move forward?
Yeah, absolutely. We have been doing plans with the building department for many years and they realize we have a two-week turnaround time from when we get the plans to the deadline of when we like to get them back. And usually we meet that unless we're running behind or a day or two late. But typically, we figure on a two-week turnaround the first time. And then if there's some corrections, then those get sent out to the design team. When they come back in, then we try to do that re-review in one week.
Well, it's good to know that it's a two-week, generally a turnaround time because, you know, in the past, one of the things that we've heard from some of the contractors that they're taking too long. So, you know, at least if we know that it's an average two-week turnaround time, that's good.
Yeah, a lot of cities right now, I'm hearing as much as three months for the first review just because everyone is so incredibly busy. But the latest we've done lately is about three weeks, but typically two weeks.
Any other questions, council? Okay, go ahead, move forward. Go on. Do you have anything else to add to your presentation?
None at this time. Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you for doing the presentation and answering our questions.
My pleasure.
Okay, let's go on to item two, the presentation by Kip Handen, L.L.P., J. Chimino, Development, on Development Plans and Projects. Who's the presenters, please?
There's a few of us, but I'm going to be first. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing us to come and join you today and share with you our plans.
Where's the book?
Yeah, you know what? This is a takeaway. We don't necessarily have to look at it now, but we wanted you to be able to listen to what we're talking about today and then have this at your home and really believe it because there's a lot of information. There's years of work because of it. I'll leave one more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for allowing us to be here with you all this afternoon. My name is Gina Chimino. I am president of Team Trinidad. And we are not here to ask you for anything, any favors. We're here to share with you, you know, where we've been, where we are now in our projects and where we plan to go. We first started our work in Trinidad about 16 years ago when my dad formed Trinidad Community Foundation. And Trinidad Community Foundation, as many of you know because you've been part of it, was formed based on five pillars. Health, recreation, historic preservation, education, and communication. And so when you look at all of our projects that we've done in the past, we've completed the projects we're working on now and the ones that we have planned for the future, they're all built around those five pillars. Phil, I know you served on TCF for many years. Lisa Camarillo is current president and, you know, she does a great job leading the foundation. Our first project 16 years ago was the Mount Carmel Health Wellness and Community Center. When we bought the church and spent four years renovating this church, this historic church into what is today the Mount Carmel Health Wellness and Community Center. We opened Mount Carmel first in 2011 with the mission to provide integrated health and wellness that serves and nurtures the mind, body, and spirit. We quickly deeded the asset to the 501(c)(3) Mount Carmel. We don't own it. It's a nonprofit. It's a community asset for the community. Today, just this year, 2022, year-to-date, I think through September, under the leadership of Salud, they've seen just under 6,000 medical, behavioral, and dental patients. Under the leadership of Ashley DePaula and her team, they have produced and run, year-to-date, 27 different wellness and youth programs. And they're all for it. They're all for the community, all to a end. To date, we have been able to serve 4,200 wellness visitors. Mount Carmel also, as most of you know because you've been there a time or two, hosts both public and private events, right? So this year, we've hosted over 2,200 visitors for events. But one of the things we're really proud of, and this is what, you know, need, right? Need is the mother of invention. When COVID hit and people were really hard hit, food insecurities really became a bigger issue than it was. And so we started our food box program. I think we have served over 75,000 meals to date. But just this year, we've served over 11,000 meals this year, post-COVID times. Once Mount Carmel stabilized, our attention turned to helping the downtown. Toyota was our first downtown project. And it wasn't an easy one, right? You'd think that building a new building would be easy, especially when you compare it to historic preservation. Nothing is easy compared to historic preservation. But it wasn't because the site that we chose, which was downtown, was not only a brown's field and it needed to be cleaned up, right? It was old railroad property, but it also was in the flood plain. So we had to raise the site three feet. The other part, we partnered with the city and we built Cedar Street because we had to get from commercial to the Toyota store. So it took a lot of time to build that building, but we knew we wanted it downtown because I find this really hard to believe. But in the 50s, there were 11 automotive franchises in downtown Trinidad, 11. And we really felt that we, in effort to vitalize the downtown, we had to bring critical mass into the downtown. And what better way to do that than customers that not only have, you know, need, have transportation needs, but also service needs and parts needs? Gary will talk more about what that meant. So Lisa came from Albuquerque, New Mexico, 10 years ago. Can't believe it's been 10 years. And over the last 10 years, she's done a great job running Toyota, building her team. And she's become an important member of this community and she loves it. I mean, Trinidad, she calls Trinidad home. So then Toyota was up in Redding and we turned our efforts to our next renovation project, and that was the Armor Meat Building at what is now Club 14. Under the leadership of Si Michaels, Alicia Goan, and the entire team there, the club serves both lunch and dinner seven days a week in a fun and friendly atmosphere. By this time, we knew we weren't slowing down. I mean, we built, that was our third bid project. And, you know, workforce was tough, finding the assets that we needed to get the stuff built was very hard. And that's when we decided that forming Trinidad Construction Company was something we had to do. So two years ago, we formed Trinidad Construction Company. Under the leadership of Carl Gabrielson, Trinidad Construction has gone from two employees to nearly 50. And that is not only a product of Carl's, you know, team building, but also the need in this community to be able to build quality and quality workmanship. And the fruits of their labor are seen all over the city. I mean, look at Club 14. Look at the marketplace. I mean, look at Club 14, look at the marketplace, the Champion Center. There's some beautiful things in Champion, even the Fox Theater. So we're proud of that. And I don't know that you'll ever find someone who loves historic redevelopment the way Carl has a passion for. So now we're at the marketplace. And this was the old Marty Feeds. We renovated this building into a food court. After all, I mean, if urban areas can enjoy these types of venues, why can't we? And in fact, we did tour several of them before we really landed on our design at the marketplace. Today, the marketplace is home of, is home for nine restaurateurs. And it's the only place, really, that you can get a lot of different foods. But it also, this is important, serves as an incubator space, allowing small culinary businesses to get started. They just rent this small space. The Market Bar and adjacent flex space will be available for public and private events very soon, and probably within the next, well, by the end of the year anyway. Oh, not yet. Let me talk about that, and then we'll go there. So moving up the street to Commercial Street, and the renovation of the First National Bank and today's Champion Center. Nearing the completion of the first and second floors, our home of many new Trinidad businesses, Five Star Bank, Keller Williams, Wil Kelo and Associates, they're CPAs, and the Werfing World Journal, all have offices in Champion Center. And none of them were in Trinidad before they came to Champion Center. Mount Carmel also expanded our offices into the Champion Center. So now we have grown our footprint, so we're offering these wellness programs that I was talking to you about. Well, we offer them downtown, too. They're not just on Robinson, they're downtown as well. And we have just started building out the lower level of the Champion Center into the next stage of Mount Carmel, and that is the Holistic Health Center. And the Holistic Health Center will attract wraparound services that complement our already-integrated health model, which includes medical, behavioral, and dental. We look to bring in people, massage therapy, occupational therapy, pain management ability, physical therapy, to complement the already-integrated health model. Of course, last summer, because lots of you were there, we opened Sister Blandina Gardens. Many of you know that when you walk in the front of Sister Blandina Gardens, the facade was not something we, you know, built, well, we did, but we saved the historic facade of one of the buildings that was a wrap and wrap. We saved it, preserved it, so that when we were able to build it into the entrance, we could. And so Sister Blandina Gardens is operated by Mount Carmel. Mount Carmel not only has programs there, but also it's a venue for outdoor events. We've had several weddings there this last summer. So both public and private events. And we will soon be promoting it as a private park, because it is, with membership opportunities for individuals, families, and businesses. So when we rang the bell, you know, 2022, the first thing that was on the table was buying the Ford Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealership. So right out of the chute, we purchased those franchises and renovated the building. Don Allen, under the leadership of Don Allen, Ford Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, they're passionate about serving this community in both sales and service. And Don came to Trinidad from Denver, and he calls it home. So we're really happy to have Don here in Trinidad. Gary and Si will talk more in depth about our future plans. But just to touch on this, La Porte, which is a 15-acre site, that when it is fully functioning, will be the home of the Hilton Garden Inn, which is a destination hotel, Club 14, drive-through coffee, and retail space. That's what we're working on now. La Porte is now. In the future, we have several, we have several projects that are on the drawing board, and one of them is the brewery, turning that into a mixed use, the school and convent, turning it into housing, potentially even townhomes along the river, just south of Toyota. But what's really exciting is even a multi-season epic drama. And with that, I'd like to show a quick video. Does Audra do this downstairs? Audra, did you hear epic?
I guess I'm not even enjoying this. Hold on, just a second.
Thank you.
She's enjoying it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna start again.
Okay, thank you.
There's an underscore that you've probably never heard about a historic town.
You don't see it.
You've probably never been to.
You just hear it.
But that's about to change.
What is going on?
There's a case in Trinidad, a really authentic, multi-season television program, I'll bring that.
Hang on just, you want to say "shine"? Hang on, just one second, I'll just give it a second one.
I should have brought popcorn. Where is she?
Okay, here we go.
There's an epic story that you've probably never heard about a historic town you've probably never been to, but that's about to change. This is Trinidad, a gritty, authentic, multi-season television series faithful to actual events that took place in 1870s Colorado. The Trinidad series is a new twist on the classic Western saga, with a protagonist that isn't a gunslinging sheriff or outlaw, because the person who really fought lawlessness and corruption was a nun. Blandina Sagali was a sister of charity who came to Trinidad at the age of 22. Today, she is on her way to being recognized as the 11th American saint. Known for empowering women, children, and anyone in need, Sister Blandina never backed down from the pursuit of justice and wore her habit like a superhero wears a cape. Inspired by her published letters and journals, the series follows Sister Blandina's journey as she navigates the challenges of life in 1870s Trinidad. Clear-eyed, compassionate, and brave, Sister Blandina fought racism, lawlessness, and violence. She started schools, built hospitals, saved men from lynch mobs, and sparked a positive influence that is still felt to this very day. An unsung hero of the West who never carried a gun. Her story is compelling and inspiring, and supported by a diverse cast of extraordinary historical characters, like Trinidad's founding matriarch, Dolores Baca, the missionary sisters of charity, Buffalo soldier Capé Williams, and the inquisitive outlaw Billy the Kid, as well as a host of immigrants, miners, drifters, and dreamers going west to find their fortunes. The Trinidad series explores a uniquely female perspective of the Old West, which has never been seen before. This groundbreaking series is set to be filmed just outside Trinidad, Colorado, with an authentic set built to transport viewers back to the 1870s, a world filled with saloons and dance halls, a frontier convent, adobe storefronts, a new brick bank, the Baca family hacienda, the Bloom family Victorian, as well as immigrant tent cities and coal mines. This custom construction will not only serve as the backdrop of the series, but will also be open to the public, driving tourism and interest in the town of Trinidad. Production is soon to be underway, but an undertaking of this size still needs support. So saddle up and help tell a story that needs to be told. Trinidad, the original series, coming soon.
Gina, how do you plan to show this to the community? Because I think that they need to see this.
We have, you know what? We don't have plans to show the community right now. Right now...
And in their future.
Oh, yes. I'm figuring that out. We will. Right now, we're in the, we're in the stages where we're working with the producer, and we, you know, we have several episodes written, and now we are raising capital to film it.
You know, because I believe that this will get the community really excited, especially the people that have lived your lives, and they know the history. And I think, and even the newcomers, that, you know, new people, new residents that come to Trinidad that have looked at the history, will get pretty excited about this. So introducing them to the community, I think, would be...
Great. Well, I think that's why we wanted to show it today. I mean, really, we haven't shown this to anyone other than our group and, of course, the investors that we're talking to, to, you know, help fund the effort. Okay, so now I am going to sit down and I'm going to turn it over to Gary.
You're my Vanna.
Oh, that's right.
Pretty hard to follow Gina and Sister Blandina. I am not up to be the 11th.
They're not alike.
So, Council, Mayor, City Manager, staff, thanks for allowing us to spend a few minutes with you. As we're car dealers at heart, my piece starts with a little walkthrough of the automotive footprint in Trinidad, our Toyota store. It used to be located up on Exit 11. At one point, we were a little surprised, and it was converted into a cannabis sales place, and we found that out in the newspaper one day. And we quickly moved to Tony Paradisa's shop on Highway 160 as we planned to build our new Toyota store in the downtown. As Gina said, it wasn't as simple as it looked. First way to convince Toyota to keep the dealership in Trinidad, they were pressing for us to relocate the site to Alamosa. And that process probably took six months to convince them that we could successfully build Toyota's business in Trinidad. When we started in our new facility, we started with our general manager, Lisa, and 17 people. We've since grown it to 35 employees. Retail sales, at the time that we opened, were above 40 cars. We're now doing between 80 and 100. 2,000, parts and service revenue, one of the things that was important to us locating into the downtown is how we could support the city. When we were located both on Exit 11 and on 160 of Tony Paradisa, we are outside the city limits, and so there was no tax revenue generated in the city of Trinidad. We've tripled our estimate in terms of the sales revenue that were coming through that store. So parts and service revenue, property tax, which didn't come into the city at all, this year will exceed $850,000 in city, state, and county taxes, with another $70,000 in property tax. So for us, and for the city, hopefully everyone feels it's been a, it's been a good investment. In early 2022, I purchased from Jeff Cook, the, gotta get all the names in, Ford, Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep.
Ram.
Ram. Yeah, from Jeff Cook. In the facility that Jeff had, which was built in the early 1900s, we spent the first half of 2022 remodeling the facility. It was in pretty rough shape. And in fact, our intent is to relocate on Cedar Street across from Toyota, and I think the city did help us through an urban renewal program on some of that property. And another piece potentially is coming up on the ballot, and we'll put our bid in and hopefully be successful in acquiring that. In 2023, we'll begin construction. This is close, it may not be the exact design, but what we want to do is integrate some Trinidad brick and bring in some of the historic, you know, elements, yet we still have to meet Ford and Jeep's elements as well. So that's kind of our thought at this point. Sales, employment, we think will be similar to Toyota, 30, 35 employees, producing within a few years somewhere close to a million in tax revenues. So pretty excited to have that come about. In fact, what is really exciting is the facility is there since 1908, 1909. In our first month that we took that over, we set an all-time sales record for both Ford and for Jeep Chrysler. So, and that's with pandemic and no cars on the ground. So we're pretty proud of the team that's there. Moving away from automotive to housing, we'll be developing Holy Trinity School and Convent. So this is just a little bit of a rendering, the convent on the left, the school on the right. It's a large project. We're anticipating 34 workforce housing units on the right and a hostel, I'll talk a little bit about that on the left. Beginning with City Council's commitment through the Workforce Housing Program, you know, you helped establish the first grant that we obtained towards the build out here. It's about a $15 million project. And to be able to build it and then turn around and have it fit workforce housing, it takes a village, right? So right now, we're working actually with a gal named Carrie Rackey, who some of you might know, she's a consultant to the city through StanTech, on a million-dollar grant to the EPA to clean up asbestos. Asbestos was the premium product to build old buildings. So that, it is a $1.1 million estimate is with the bid that we got to clean it up. So we're hoping the EPA will help us with a million of that. So that goes in 15th of November. And then we have conversations right now with DOLA on some workforce housing programs that they're working on in history, Colorado, which will restrict some of the changes that we can make here, but it'll make the project affordable and something that we could turn around and hit the affordable housing, workforce housing limits. and, and hit the affordable housing, workforce housing limits. Holy Trinity Convent, um, actually thanks to a great degree of Michael Yurman throwing some ideas at us. We see that as a hostel. So usually think of that being a youth hostel. Thinking about this, we looked at what is happening with Fisher's Peak. And not everybody wants to camp, um, but they like to glamp. So think of this as a, as a glamping hotel, right? So there's about 30, 35 rooms that the nuns had inside. They're 10 by 12. So if you think about a 10 by 12 room, it would have a feel that the Hilton will have. Yet it'll have a bank of bathrooms at the end that you'll share with your friends and neighbors. There, there won't be, there'll be coffee services because the rooms are so small. But we'll have a laundry kitchen, a little coffee bar area in the downstairs that would be common. And potentially even a little, um, we're always thinking of how do we support these, particularly the, the entrepreneurs that have come into town, the small restaurateurs. So we see downstairs, there's a, um, a boiler room, which is really interesting. And there's tunnels that we found that go underground and come up, actually not too far from here. And so we see that being like, uh, think of it entering into a subway, um, like you would in New York. You can come down and when you come out the other side, you'd be in this little speakeasy. And so it'd probably be more of a beer and wine type of location. But then you could go to a QR code and you could order food from the surrounding restaurants. They can bring the food over. They have delivery fee and they have additional revenue coming from, you know, whether it's the marketplace or, you know, the Los Amos Grill. Kind of a thought.
How many of the tunnels did you find? Just a single tunnel or was it multiple?
You know, honestly, um, there are other points that boarded over or a little, a little concerned about knocking it out. We assume they're, they're not going to collapse on us, but, um, still to be determined.
This is under Alden Rivera.
It is. Um, but what came out of from Michael, which was interesting is we started talking about all of the remodeling that's going to be happening in the city here. The one thing we found with the hotel is getting tradespeople and a lot of them come from out of town. We're lucky to have Si as a partner and she's, gives us a 5% break in terms of maybe 10?
Yeah, yeah, 10.
Of housing all those tradespeople. And there's been hundreds. So, you know, they've, they've been staying in Villa Cuta. What we see is potentially extended stay space within the hostel where drywallers can stay for a month or so and work on some of the other housing projects that may be going on. So kind of a dual purpose project that we see coming out of that. Next month. So this is, this is pretty exciting. So adjacent to Holy Trinity Church and Sister Blandina Wellness Garden is the Burry. Probably Trinidad's most iconic building. I think when you come along I-25, you see the, I call it the bell tower. And I think people look at that and they remember Trinidad to a great degree from Fisher's Peak and that building. So we're slated to begin construction, uh, before the end of November. So there are eight buildings that were all built adjacent walls. Um, we did our darnedest. We had two different structural engineers come out. And it's a little scary, like if you look where, um, there's a sandstone wall. If you go into the basement, the foundation has turned to sand. There's no stone. So, um, some of these things are totally unsavable. And as hard as we want it to, we can't. So, um, five of the buildings, and it doesn't look like five, but there's five, um, will be preserved. And so the first is, is demolition and second is reconstruction. Still kind of in the vision stage. We see mixed use project combining retail on the first floor. And the upper floors would be, um, upscale residences or possibly an upscale small boutique hotel. It's kind of what we think with some convention space and maybe a little restaurant up on the upper floor. We could sit out on the patio and overlook Trinidad. Pretty exciting.
The bottom section of that, which is going to be the community area and the rooms, the rent for whatever, um, are you thinking of leaving that kind of industrial type look? Or are you thinking of doing more of a modern type?
There's some really, really neat, um, interior. Everything in there was built to hold, you know, thousands and thousands of pounds of grain and everything. So the floors are three feet thick of concrete. I think that's all sound. So we'd like to retain as much of the, of the existing structure as possible. Um, and I don't want to get too far. We went down to San Antonio and they had a hotel retail space that was developed from a Burry. And that was kind of an inspiration when we first went down there. And, and we're thinking we'd like to retain as much of that feel as we can.
The reason why I bring that up is I've been to, have you been to the water tower in Fuddle? How they have converted that and they're leaving very industrial looking? I was just there again last Friday. And it's interesting the way that they are renovating and leaving that industrial look to.
I think we see a lot of that. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the steam piping and everything in there was removed or stolen or whatever. So there's not as much, um, infrastructure relative to the brewery as we would have loved to have had. For example, down in, down in Santa, or in San Antonio, all the steam lines run. They took one of the baths that cut it out and put a restaurant inside the vat. I mean, it's really cool stuff. So we're going to try to keep everything we, we can that makes sense. Keep it, keep it iconic. So with that, um, we're going to bring up Si and talk a little bit more about our most ambitious project, La Puerta.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Erin and Neiman and Erin and happy belated birthday and Franklin and Karen and Eli and Les. Thank you, Steve and Kim always. And it's always wonderful to be here. It's always feels blessed to be able to share good news because we all work really hard. And sometimes it's not always good news you guys deal with. So, um, those of us that have been working intimately and living in Trinidad for 30 years, we have surely seen the uprising, the downfall of the gambling going to happen or the coal mines or the gas and oil. And, and one thing that Trinidad has always been and continues to be is champions, you know? I don't know how many times we felt like we were falling or we watched businesses go away and be resurrected again in another format. And, uh, and the trade of what the marijuana industry has done, both good and now as we see it expanding into other cities, what we have tried to have to recoup and do. But, um, there is, uh, game changers going on right now. And the Hilton on the river will be a game changer for Trinidad. But that game changing has already been going on with all the projects that Gina and Gary and everybody in the group has done there. And, uh, in the movie itself, and, uh, you know, we talked about Sister Blandina. I just wanted to point out in the movie and how important that is. But Sister Blandina and the Sisters of Charity had over 400 Sisters of Charity and Jesuits that had been here. So when you really think about the family of Trinidad and how important they were and why that movie is so important to all of us that love Trinidad is to realize that, um, the character of how Trinidad started, which was with a lot of humble people, really working hard to give, to give our, our future a chance. Uh, the marketplace too, you know, um, it will also have the family entertainment center that goes next to it, which will have some of those family values that will be added to the downtown. Club 14 has been really trying to foster, those of you that go there, uh, foster all the outdoor recreation, all the trails and maps that go downtown. This past summer, and if you noticed, the pergola got raised for a little over four feet because our, our leader Jay decided that when people were sitting in the restaurant, they weren't able to see Fisher's Peak in the beautiful glorious manner that it is. That, so that whole big, uh, project had to be taken down by Carl and his team and resurfaced back up, which has also been one of the game changers for this group is that we've had the leadership of the downtown development with, uh, Carl, really not only hiring so many tradesmen in this area, but teaching many people in this area how to do the trades, which is what we all need. Because it's all nice that everybody wants, uh, different jobs and wants the white collar jobs. But the truth of the matter is we need tradespeople to build a town, to keep a community together. And Carl has surely done that all over town with, uh, guys and girls. He has a lot of them on his team. Jay, uh, has been a game changer by coming back to his hometown and giving us so much. Uh, and his leadership has led us all for further inspiration. But also Gina, uh, his daughter, she has continued to come here for years, once a week, twice a week, three times a week when it's needed and really cheerlead people on. And, uh, and her face isn't always seen downtown, but she is always working on that. And so now we deal with the game changing of the Hilton on the river. Um, and I have been really humbled and grateful that we have been able to, um, champion this project off and be myself a part of the project, which has been nothing short of spectacular. And, uh, the vision of, before we see any video, I really want to take you into the vision of the Hilton. So when you first walk into the hotel, there is, we, we salvage, we didn't put any rooms on the second floor, about the whole lobby area. So you walk in, the whole big view of the windows is our lovely Fisher's Peak shining out there as you're standing by the desk. And although that sounds really lovely, we had a fight for Hilton to that. As most of you know, when you come into a hotel these days, you walk over to the right or to the left or some secluded area, they don't really like you in the very center. But we thought it was really important for us to say, here you are. So if you come into the hotel and somebody else is checking in, you just get to sit there and glaze at this beautiful, uh, um, mountain sort of in front of us. And then on the left is the Chrysler room, which a lot of people don't really know, but, uh, Chrysler built his first engine in Trinidad. So that's another automotive sort of connection to Trinidad. And in that area, when there's not any conventions going on, there will be a 1948 Woody Town and Country Chrysler sitting there. And it will be part of the signature amenity of, uh, the hotel. It will be the car that we run around with, um, driving people, so such and forth, back and forth. And then to the other right, you'll see a couple elevators. And right beyond that, you'll see the eclectic, really fine wine bar. But outside those windows, there'll be a huge deck standing there outside with grillas and tables and the, and the canal runs right by and the river runs right by it. And, and the views are, are just spectacular. One of the amazing things about that hotel, and you know, I always say, people don't realize how much of a, in a bowl we are in Trinidad. Because if you go down I-25, it sort of flattens out Trinidad. But when you think, we don't have a 12th street because we're in a bowl and things go up. So the reason why I mentioned that is you can be on the first floor in the exact same spot that the second floor looks different, the third floor looks different, and the fourth floor looks different. All the rooms, you can see all the water that we have in Trinidad. But one of the most amazing things is on the fourth floor, because of the way the dip is, the courthouse is right in front of you besides everything else. So the show off of the town, and when you're there, the architecture of the town is displayed in a way that you can't really, I, I haven't seen any other area that you can see that much architecture, but it's, it's just like a viewing room of the whole town. It's, it's quite spectacular. And then, um, on the left side, after you walk in, we will have a signature restaurant called Gallardi's. So that is in respect to, um, Gallardi, who was the most winningest football coach in history. Was the winningest coach for 64 years and is from Trinidad. So not only are we going to have this spectacular hotel right on the river that is in the book as, uh, as the Hilton Garden Inn on the river. Besides that, we will be able to be in other national periodicals advertising, like maybe some of you have been to Shanahans in Denver or, uh, Jordans in Chicago or any of those. But we will have Gallardi's here in Trinidad. So we're very, we're very honored and humbled to be able to do that too. Um, outside that, that huge deck, there will be a huge gas fire pit. And then to the right of that is a skating rink. So in the summertime, we'll use it for events, but in the wintertime, we'll have skating here in Trinidad. And then right outside of that, we're going to have the, the trestle bridge. Right now, Carl and his crew are taking that trestle bridge that was painted red, white, and blue not that long ago for the spirit of Americana road. But it's going to be turned into a funnel of a wooden bridge that takes you directly into town. So when guests are staying in the rooms and we tell them what to do, where to go and what to do, they'll have a walking path to go directly into town and go frequent all those businesses that are working so hard to stay open. We all have seen Main and Commercial Street when there wasn't shops in there. They're just gorgeous, our downtown now. You know, luckily, so many of them have, have survived in the last couple of years because of the PPP funds that our government put out. But it's not so easy, right? We need, we know what the tax base is. We know the tax that we have lost over this last year. To ordinarily funnel that back in and help those businesses and be cheerleaders for them. Because it's not so easy keeping a business open when you only see a few people every day. And you can't exist with only seeing a few people every day. And then right below is, you've seen all the cleanup work that's been done and how beautiful that has opened it up. And I, any of you that have been on Facebook have seen all the comments of how incredible that is that, that, uh, that people can see through the area and it make us feel like we're a well-kept, loving area. Well, there'll be walking paths in that area and other things too for guests. So it'll be a river park too. Um, and then of course, the Purgatory River and the falls are right there. And then next to the hotel, we'll have some support businesses that will help it. Maybe a bike shop that they could rent bikes from so they can go downtown and be on that wooden bridge. Other things that might be needed, maybe running skates for the skate park in the winter and other things that will really support. We are building a resort hotel. We are just not building another mid-scale hotel that happens to be on I-25. If you remember it, how hard we all worked before, but for Hilton to come in a community of this size, they believed that what we were going to do was going to be so fantastic that it was worth it. Because there has been a lot of times over the years, people have tried to bring in the Marriott product into Trinidad and some of you might have been aware of that or the other products, but they wouldn't come because they didn't believe it was big enough. But they believe in us and what we're doing and we're proud of that and to pass it on to all of you. But if we go back into the hotel and we walk to the right, we will end up walking down the hallway where there's a two-story pool. There is so much common area in this hotel. There's only seven rooms on the bottom floor because the common area space is so huge. If we go back to the hallway and walk far to the left, we will end up seeing a fitness center. A fitness center with a, with a climbing wall, a fitness center with the state of the art equipment. And in fact, the fitness center is so huge in there. Hilton has granted us permission to sell memberships. So you could come in, you could have your signature restaurant. You can go to your signature restaurant, have coffee and a lovely whatever. And then you go, and then you can go and work out. And then, you know, it just, um, it's, it's really exciting. It is a, it is a game changer. And when you think of, um, I don't know if very many of you know the Broadmoor, but I, I love the Broadmoor and I've been going there since before I came to Trinidad. And, and it is, oh, it always inspires me to do more and to do better. And Spencer Pedro's built the Broadmoor eons ago. And he did that for economic development, for city pride of Colorado Springs, for employment and for tourism. And he really felt that if he built that in Colorado Springs, he would bring up the caliber of Colorado Springs. And if you go to the Broadmoor and you see that whole odd area, that is what he did. And he was building a resort hotel to do that. And we are desperately trying to do that, to make it just a beauty, a civic pride, uh, employment for jobs and tourism, tourism, tourism. Uh, and when you think of what Broadmoor's done, I mean, now they're the ones that have Seven Falls and the arena and other things. They did that as a start to have good family values come to that part. And that's what we're really trying to do. Now I think, Audra, there's a movie moment.
The Trinidad Hilton Garden Inn, located in beautiful Trinidad, Colorado, will be a destination hotel with easy access just off of I-25. Opening in early 2023, the hotel will bring community, culture, and connection to the growing city, which sits on the historic Santa Fe Trail. Less than two hours away from Colorado Springs, less than three hours away from Denver and Santa Fe, the Trinidad Hilton Garden Inn is the crown jewel atop a long list of breathtaking recent economic development projects happening in Trinidad, which is rapidly becoming the tourist hub of Southern Colorado. Home to Colorado's 42nd and second-largest state park, Fisher's Peak, Trinidad Lake State Park, and stunning nearby lakes Bear, Blue, Monument, and North, Trinidad is poised to become the next great outdoor destination with ample fishing, boating, camping, hiking, and recreational opportunities for everyone. Its downtown area with scores of historic buildings, including the Fox West Theater, which is undergoing a massive historic restoration, features a thriving arts and entertainment scene, and new restaurants opening monthly. The Trinidad Hilton Garden Inn Hotel is being constructed in the new La Porta subdivision, which will feature a quaint village connected to the hotel but also available to the public. And once complete, will add over 250 jobs. The hotel and village will be connected to the bustling downtown area by a historic footbridge, which will be renovated and stay true to its late 1800s roots. Habitat restoration and historic preservation are an integral part of the development plans along the Purgatory River. The river and adjoining canal flow right behind the hotel, creating spectacular views and easy access to fly fishing, kayaking, tubing, and other river recreation just steps away from the hotel. In the winter, the hotel will feature a skating rink and tubing hill for year-round recreational opportunities. Close to the river will be a riverwalk and nature park with meandering trails and plenty of places to relax or share a picnic. The Trinidad Hilton Garden Inn sits just behind and to the right of Club 14 Garden Grill and Pub, and is located off of North Commercial Street. The hotel stands 56,000 square feet and will have 96 luxurious rooms and extensive free parking. A striking port de charrette welcomes guests as they arrive, and when they step up to the front desk, they'll be greeted by a stunning view of Fisher's Peak. An upscale wine bar and modern spacious seating areas complement the beautiful lobby area. The hotel's expansive indoor pool, located on the main level, has breathtaking views and can be seen from the upper floors. Also on the lobby level is a state-of-the-art, fully-equipped fitness center with a two-story indoor climbing wall for all ages and abilities to test their skills. Oversight of the project is being conducted by both city officials and the Downtown Trinidad Development Group. The Downtown Trinidad Development Group was created to engage in commercial development projects to stimulate the growth of Trinidad and elevate it to become a vibrant tourist and residential community. The owners of the group have personal connections to Trinidad and believe that collectively, with city officials and other developers, Trinidad is poised to become a first-class destination, embodying the history and resiliency that epitomizes our great state.
Exciting, huh? Very exciting. So I just wanted to mention, too, that, you know, we're working on the Americana Avenue that's going into La Porta, and that street itself will be brick paint, so it will make the hotel feel more like a downtown hotel, which will drive more people into coming downtown, because it will be like one, the same streetlights that are downtown will be at La Porta, which is really important. The flavor of the downtown, the flavor of the outside and the grounds, though, will be very 19th century. You know, the brick streets, the bridge itself, there is a, I hate to say garbage facility, but it is sort of like a garbage facility that is being redone right now on property so that the garbage can be picked up from Club 14 and from the hotel and taken there in a really stylish manner. The destination of the hotel is really working on promoting, you know, the downtown hiking, biking, all the outdoor sports besides skating and water sports and the fitness center. And really, we're working with people that we could do horseback riding with and arrange that, and to do local guides and really, really up the tourism draw of Trinidad. The economic development that will happen because of it, at 96 rooms is what it has, is approximately about 35,000 rooms a year. The first year, we're planning on about 30,000 rooms, and that will be 60,000 to 100,000 people that we will be able to walk across that bridge and help our entrepreneurs and our small stops that shops downtown that desperately need that walking down attitude in, along with the tourism tax of 3% and the city and the CIP tax, and obviously the state tax. There will be a lot of taxes that will be generated and help offset the budget from some of the losses that we've recently done. And then, no matter all this is, there is really no comparison to the civic pride by bringing a project like this that becomes part of the downtown area to the downtown youth, to the downtown families, and the pride that we have in Trinidad. Any questions?
Questions from council.
I just have one thing to say. I'm glad Mrs. Chino gave birth to that gentleman right there, huh?
Yeah.
You know, I got to know Jay, I think it was around 2006. And it's been very amazing to me to see the visions that you have, and the soul that you have that you want to put back into this community. That is one of the big things that you emphasized way back when I was on, you know, I'm still part of the Community Foundation. However, that was one of the things that you emphasized the most, is the soul of Trinidad, trying to breathe it back. You know, I travel around, and I was just out last week to a couple of events, and I talk to people, and I tell them what is happening here in Trinidad, and I tell them what Jay has and the group has done for Trinidad. And some of them say, I wish we had that. I wished we had a Jay. So I want to say thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor.
For everything that you have done, and what you're trying to do, what you envision, you're a visionary of unproportional thoughts, whatever you want to call it. I think you've done a tremendous job. And I really want to thank you from, I know, myself for what you are doing for this community. One thing else I wanted to add is, last week at one of the events that I was there, you were talking about the filming thing that you're doing.
Uh-huh.
I saw one of the state senators there, and he asked me, he said, is Trinidad open to some funding from the Colorado filming industry?
Yeah.
And he said, you think you would have support from the city of Trinidad? And I said, you're right.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Could you help facilitate that a little bit?
Sure. But anyway, I guess they have allocated some money for the Colorado film industry.
Yeah.
And he's willing to try to push forward with some funding, so I'll talk to him real good.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you who constantly cheer for Trinidad. And next is Gina Sacra Ponte, shortly, just to close.
Close herself.
Thought it was over, but it's not.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rico, city council members, city officials. It is my pleasure to be here and to follow Team Trinidad. My name is Gina Sacra Ponte. I am the Chief Communications Officer for Phil Long Enterprise. And I want to take a little moment, just a moment, to talk about Phil Long Enterprise. You know Phil Long dealerships, but the enterprise is the accumulation of all of the great work that we do in this community. It is our family of dealerships. We have 18 dealerships, 15 of them are new vehicle dealerships, three of them are used, one of them being the Phil Long EV outlet, Southern Colorado's only pre-owned electric and hybrid vehicle outlet. We also have 25 rooftops inclusive of those dealerships across the state and in Raton, New Mexico. But in addition to those family of dealerships, we have the Downtown Trinidad Development Group. We have the three nonprofits that our CEO, Jay Chino, founded, two of them being here, Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center, Sister Blandina Wellness Gardens, and Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center in Colorado Springs, which has expanded its footprint in Pueblo, Fountain, and now Trinidad. In my role, I oversee public relations, working with local media, regional, national, in organizing community events, employee engagement, and sponsorships. I also manage internal communications to our 1,300 employees across our enterprise. 200 of them are here. They call Trinidad their home. They contribute to this city's growth both professionally and personally. The most rewarding aspect of being part of this community is working collaboratively with partners to improve the lives of others. Our mission is to nurture the mind, body, and spirit of those areas we operate in. The efforts that you've heard today, the past, present, and the future efforts, are our commitment, are a testimony to what Phil Long Enterprise represents and to the vision of the Chino family, to have Trinidad once again be the city of champions. I would like to take a moment and share some of the great community collaboration and reciprocal support we have enjoyed with the city of Trinidad and its residents. Year-round, Phil Long Enterprise supports great community events through sponsorships. Just a few highlights. In 2022, Phil Long Enterprise was the presenting sponsor of the inaugural Trinidad Arts Fest, bringing artists from around the community to our beloved city. Phil Long Toyota has, for many, many years, been the presenting sponsor of the Trinidad Triggers. This year, we provided additional support from Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center, sponsoring the seventh inning stretch, and Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center sponsoring the national anthem. We have been longtime supporters of one of the great events here, the Southwest Chief Bicycle and Comedy Festival. We are proud to be part of last year's Santa Fe Trail bicentennial celebration, along with many other nonprofits and causes, including this year's Trinidady of Blues Fest, Youth Club of Trinidad, Noah's Ark, Fisher's Peak Soup Kitchen, Trinidad Water Festival, AR Mitchell Museum, Santa Fe Trail Days, Los Anamis County Fair, among many, many others. We also build community through impactful events and programs. As Gina Chino noted earlier, we opened Sister Blandina Wellness Gardens last year. We, in attendance, had Governor Polis, Mayor Rico, many county commissioners and city council members, Bishop Sheridan, Golka, and Burr from the Catholic Diocese of Colorado Springs and Pueblo, along with members of the Sisters of Charity from Cincinnati. With a full lineup of events, starting with a mass benediction and dedication to local musicians, and an evening theatrical performance, that grand opening drew over 650 participants. Gina also spoke earlier about Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center. They offer 27 different programs. In 2021 alone, nearly 23,000 interactions with Trinidad residents happened through health and wellness programs, dental and health visits, community events, and private parties. In this year, Mount Carmel also sponsored a free wellness expo to residents, with over 20 health and wellness providers in sight, and also drew in over 200 participants. We are excited to have expanded capacity to serve with the opening of Sister Blandina Wellness Gardens and the soon-to-open Mount Carmel Holistic Care Center, which Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center just opened, providing critical resources and community connections to our veterans in this area. We previously organized a media tour for the Pueblo Chieftain to build awareness of Trinidad's growing vibrancy, and recently supported Fox 21's We Are Trinidad series with a live morning broadcast from Sister Blandina Wellness Gardens. And this community supports us. The opportunities to grow our efforts, sponsor and organize programs, are made possible by this community's support. Earlier this year, our Phil Long Toyota dealership won their Manufacturer's President's Award bestowed to them for their customer satisfaction, loyalty, and engagement in community involvement. They are one of six to hold that honor in the state of Colorado. Our Toyota dealership also provides office space for the Trinidad Community Foundation. Knowing that our customers appreciate our service and we are a valued part of this community is truly special. From the grand openings of our dealerships, to the openings of the Champion Center and the Wellness Gardens, to meetings to discuss ideas and plans, to an informational update like today, Mayor Rico and city council members and city officials, we appreciate your involvement deeply. Creating, in closing, creating public and private partnerships for the benefit of others is at the core of our business strategy. Who we are as an enterprise is reflected in what we have done, what we are doing, and what our efforts are, and the American values we hold dear. And those are: building a new downtown hotel, the first one in over 100 years, with Fisher's Peak being a focal point and being a driver of new tourism growth, facilitating job growth and economic impact, bringing world-class medical care to our community, freedom of mobility, expanded vehicle purchasing experience and convenience to Trinidad residents, and elevating our dealership footprint for destination car buying, entrepreneurship, providing location opportunities and support for small, local business owners in our community, downtown housing, and our veterans, providing resources to our heroes here. Phil Long's history was started by Phil Long himself, a World War II aviator and war hero. His commitment to service of our country and community is a brand we have lived up for 77 years. On behalf of the Phil Long Team Trinidad, thank you again for your time and service to Trinidad. If you have any further questions, we'd like to entertain them. Thank you.
Any questions, would you? Jay, we would like to hear from you.
From me?
From Jay.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. We've been thinking about how to do this over the last six months or so, and it was about time for us to enlighten you on what we're doing, what we have been doing, and what we will be doing. And to, you know, further, not motivate you, but further inspire you to believe, as we do, that we are only here for a short time on this journey. And all we, and me and the rest of all of us, I guess, the only thing that we can do is do the best we can do, be the best person we can be, and lead the best we can lead. We try to do that each and every day. And I turn my attention to the city of Trinidad, the town I was born and raised in, the love that I have, I've had for this town since the day I was born. And many people ask me, why do you do it? You know, I think the spirit of giving back and making something happen is so strong in my heart, that it is an honor to be able to do it, an absolute total honor to do it. I know people don't believe that. Some people do. I want you to believe it. I want you all to believe it is an honor to be able to help this community and be able to follow through with our vision. We all have visions. Some of us can do it sometimes, some of us can't, and we try our little best to, whatever our vision is to. And we try our little best to, whatever our vision is to make things better, we follow through with it. Again, thank you so much for letting us attend and being a part of your meeting today.
You know, I wanted to say this, Jay, because periodically when I'm in cars, friends, I drop by and I see him. And a couple of years ago, you know, people, like you said, asked, "Well, what's Jay giving out of this?" People were asking me that all the time. So one day when I was in cars, friends, I asked Jay, "Jay, tell me, what is your..." People are asking this. And he says, "Just the love of my community that I grew up in," exactly what you said. That was the best answer that I could hear. Thank you.
And thank you, thank you all.
No, no.
Let's go ahead and take a quick recess before we move on to the next item.
Thank you.
The back of my head?
Sounds like a country song.
I was like, huh, for a planner, not very good.
Maybe we better not have you in here.
I know, right?
This is the beginning of the time of year that you must check the weather. Before you go anywhere.
Well, it was eighty until Friday. It was a good shape.
At least I have fans.
It's going to be seventy-eight, so you're okay.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I was laughing. When I woke up, I was like, oh, yep.
Go. All right. I want to do like, rock and roll country, let's ride.
Be careful.
I'll just fuck you up.
Shorten the point.
Come on, come on, Aaron. Yeah, you tell who kills me, sure.
Right. Shorten the point.
This is an exciting stuff. Hey, we sit around.
We need some senior housing. I mean, like, people like me, in a couple of years, I'm going to have to sell my house and move into a condo or something.
So your issue is the fact that you don't have the ability in your residential zoning code. I'll send you a great article.
Please.
The issue is that the nineties, your code, because I have officially read through your zoning code. But what you're seeing is a lot of codes were written in the nineteen-nineties where they didn't allow things like ADUs or townhomes, and it just completely took out your housing stock, the single-family, large residential. And, I mean, it's a huge movement across the United States. The update, that's part of all the hype and everything. But to create that mobility inside your market so that people can, so families can live in your home and then live back in... It was the way that the U.S. was built from nineteen-ninety to nineteen-fifty.
Nobody was going to get old in those days.
Yeah. And I have a whole generation.
I know three people that have left Trinidad my age or older because they couldn't find a suitable house that they could live in, which is their life.
It's, I mean, your code, SLIUS code, and LaHunt, I'm going through this. This is a great introduction. So we're looking at through the IHOP grant.
Your house is a bank expand.
Unlimited payments. Yes, no, right? So, as you know, I'm here funded through the DOLA grant to look at qualified housing strategies. And one of the things that's part of that is looking at your ladies' code. Now, I have a very golden rule about touching ladies' codes, and it's that before I even open it up, I mean, I've opened it up and I've read it, but before I start bringing back things to the council or the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we set some guardrails on what that conversation's going to look like. Because the last thing I want to do is come in six months from now, in June, and say, "Oh, I'm only here for three more weeks, so here's all these ideas," and make the community go nuts selling you, because of things that I've tried to sell to you. What I did do, though, is I went through your code, I went through the comp plan, and I found two kind of overriding things where the comp plan, where the comp plan is saying this is where we should have been going since 2017, and where the qualified strategies that DOLA wants to implement kind of align. The biggest being an expedited review process. I've also heard that from the staff, and I've also heard that from the development community of wanting to look at how do we create review processes that get folks through in a reasonable timeframe, and make sure that you're looking at things that you need to be looking at. That is probably the biggest thing. And I want to ensure that the council buys in on the fact of looking at the ladies' code and trying to make it business and development-friendly.
One of the things that I read a while back, the conference, I went through that, reread it again. And one of the things that I found is there is so much redundant language in there that it creates a lot of confusion. And if, you know, I just start on council, when we okay this, and if I redo it today, I'll mix it and say, "We need to scale this down."
So that's where I'm going. And so if you, I have a four-step process that I would like to go through. And the first step is to not touch entitlements. It's really to look at your processes. You have twelve to sixteen different processes, how you look at it. I'd like to get it down to three: major impact, limited impact, administrative review. And the nice thing about that kind of system is that under major impact, if it is like an annexation, subdivision, and major development, you as the council can look at all those applications at one time. So we'd actually do a concept plan where you sit here with the planning commission, and here out an applicant, give them initial feedback so that when they spend all the money on all of the plans and everything, they know what the line is, what to cross. And then they go through the planning commission, basically a preliminary plat, and a final plat, and if they have to do things like rezone that require a public hearing, it's two meetings, there's really no way around it.
Before you go on, I'd just ask you something. Have you looked at the proposed legislation that may be coming up with increasing the density?
For which...
Well, that's some proposed legislation that may be coming forward in this next legislative session.
So I think what you're, yeah, so I think what you're talking about is under the R1 zoning. Is that, is that weird?
I'm not sure if that's what it actually is, but that's something that's proposed. That's actually a copy here, I've got a copy of it. And it's Housing Statewide Land Use and Zoning Regulations. Zoning post to allow for denser housing near transit corridors.
Yes.
Kind of the emphasis of that.
So TOD, yes. I haven't heard about the exact legislation, but I think, again, just as an overall critique of the zoning code, a lot of what you have is reminiscent of the nineties and eighties, where when the last time you really kind of got into your code, it was really targeted at single-family development. And again, Karen's question of how do I continue your housing is really through that allowance of different housing types. And I think that's where there's a kind of a missing gap. And to get to that, I mean, that's step three. So step one is, step one, what I like to do is with the Planning, Zoning, and Variance Commission, is to look at your review procedures, not change any entitlements. Not change any zoning, not change anything, and get a detailed review process in short order that basically condenses your code and creates some middle requirements that are uniform, that we go back to citing city specifications, and allowing the folks downstairs to tell applicants, "Yes, you need this, you need a..." "Yes, you need a plat, yes, you need a traffic study, no, you don't need a traffic study." And let them, based on the applications, make those requirements. It doesn't, I just, I want to be clear because I want to do that rather quickly because there's also quite a few grammatical no-no's in your code. That is an important piece because when it comes back to you, the community also needs to understand that this was... That, that is an important piece because when it comes back to you, the community also needs to understand that this was not a rewrite to change someone, what someone can do with their property. I think that's really important because that's a whole different, which we're gonna get into, that's a whole different animal. Because that's when folks come, right? And they wanna know exactly how did this affect my property. And the good news is it didn't affect your property, it just affected the processes of how you go about doing things. And it made it easier and made more business friendly. So that's step one. So step two is getting into what you just described, which is the TOD, looking at division. So the starter lining, I mean, looking at today's presentation, what was really interesting in hearing some of the comments was that, that you actually have EPA Brownsville grant and Ryan Givens from Stantec is on. As part of that funding that you got, you actually are able to do area-wide planning, um, through that grant. So it's at no additional cost that you can bring in another planning resource to the community that can really look at all that, Ryan, get into what that really means. But what that does is it helps inform me on the backend of the process of what, instead of me trying to rewrite your commercial code, it shows me what the council and the community's vision is. And then I write the code to that vision instead of me trying to write the code to a vision I don't know. Um, I think it's a really unique opportunity, it's at no cost to the city because it's covered under the EPA Brownsville grant. And on top of that, the other really interesting thing, and I don't want to spill Ryan's thunder here, but the other really nice thing about that is it, is part of all of these assessments, it creates a property profile, we can look at things like reuse and what the parking demands in the future will be, so we can look at parking demand studies. You guys already had a parking plan. So being able to go through a three-month public process where folks can come and talk about how they wanna see the redevelopment of the core, uh, and allow that process to dictate whatever kind of changes come out on the backend, so I look at commercial zones. So that would be, we would kick off and start the internal process of doing all the mapping, property identification in December, uh, and then really kick off after the, after the holiday season, January, February, March, kind of a public process. So it'd be a three-month process. And the nice thing is that I would have Stantec as a partner to be holding those public meetings, um, as well as allowing me to focus in on some of the, no one really cares what I'm writing in this ladies' code as far as the typing.
I looked about the public meetings in Peru, those take place?
Um, well, we can get into, it'll be January, February, March.
Good. I have an idea of that.
Yeah. But we, and we'll talk, Ryan's gonna go into, um, getting some traction tonight on how the council wants to shape those meetings. So whether we wanna create a steering communities, stakeholders, et cetera. Again, I don't wanna spill too much of this thunder. Um, but then on the third piece, the third piece is talking about the residential uses. And that, that is, uh, that is going back to the DOLA qualified strategies. Mayor Rico is going and looking at those housing densities, looking at appropriate zoning, uh, and seeing where your actual dimensional standards and coming back for recommendations. I wanna be real careful on that because I am not, honestly, looking at the ladies' code and looking at your built environment, it's not, you don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think you have a beautiful town, you have grid, your, your community, your community has historic neighborhoods. You gotta be real sensitive before you make major changes to that. And the other big piece of the puzzle is whether or not you guys wanna deviate from the architectural styles, the setbacks, et cetera, that you currently have established. As a community-wide discussion, it's not something I take lightly. So I wanna ensure that we build in that process with the Planning, Variance, and Zoning Commission, uh, to ensure that they've had a chance to look at how that would play out with different, with different changes to residential. So then the final piece would be to look at an overall recommendation, April, May, and June, in front of the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Look at the potential entitlement changes. I don't wanna say we're gonna change them because I don't know, I wanna hear from the public. But then that would be the final adoption. So you'd actually have two potential code adoptions, one in January, which is to clean up and expedite processes. And the second would be in the summertime, looking at actual entitlements, which could be things like ADUs, different senior housing, townhomes, et cetera, adding those kind of uses to the zone district after they've been fully vetted by the neighborhoods and the community. And so that's kind of the multi-step process. And with the council's blessing, we'll, we'll just embark on that, with any feedback, we'll disembark on that. But the other big thing is I wanted to, Ryan Givens from Stantec, I wanted him to give a real quick overview, um, on area-wide planning. So Ryan, so actually, before I turn it over to Ryan, is there any questions about that kind of, that process, and then we can get into what this looks like?
Any questions?
No.
So land use code and the building code, is there gonna be any interference with the building code with the land use code?
No, right now, you're, so as part of my, as part of what you added in the RFQ for my services, it was the adoption of the two thousand eighteen code. You're already on it. So I was like, oh, okay. So I don't, I didn't have to go back and look at the adoption of that because we had planned, I had planned, I had budgeted two months of doing contract meetings on the update from the twelve to the eighteen. And so you're already on the eighteen. So you've already gone through that with Dan Wee. So we are in good shape as far as the building code.
Now, the building code, I know that the last time we looked at that in the eighteen, I think it was, um, they pretty much were recommending that we adopt it. Do you, you know, I'm, we're, you know, there's already probably a twenty twenty-two code that's out there. Do you anticipate, um, them saying that we need to adopt the newer code at any point in time, maybe anything about that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. The, the, right now, the state minimum is the eighteen. The new energy codes that are coming out, there was an initiative to push communities to the twenty twenty-two energy code. Rural Colorado fought adamantly against that for good cause, um, because it would have escalated costs. I, I wouldn't be building a couple right now had that happened.
We don't, we're not really forced to do that, it's up to us, right, on what code we adopt as far as the eighteen and the twenty-two?
Yeah, so what you're allowed to do is now you're on the eighteen, the one thing you can look at, and we can look at this through the residential code, are called local text amendments. Uh, a big one is, for instance, uh, not, I don't, I don't want, this is, I'm, you're, you're putting me out on a thin liquor. Because I don't, I don't, I haven't talked to the fire chief, but, you know, there's, there's definitely different views of this. For instance, uh, when I adopted the eighteen codes in Crestview, one of the things that we did was we eliminated sprinkler requirements in townhomes, but not condos. So townhomes have two-hour vertical walls on that, and they're, and they're built like this, so you don't have anyone living below you. So the idea is that you can sell those as single-family homes because you own the land. Condos are stacked, and I always recommend sprinkling, because someone below you starts a fire and you're stuck upstairs. But you're allowed to do things like that, you're allowed to look at things in the energy code. You know, I had a, I had a contractor who's building a project out in the southeast. He said it eloquently, he's like, you have to actually be a really, really talented builder to build a crappy house because if you follow the codes, you can't. Uh, so if someone's, someone's asleep on the job, I mean, they're so tight now with under the eighteen codes that you actually have to bring makeup air to the, to the units. So they're, they're just, the building standards have gotten to a point personally where it's, for me, I, I have always been a little bit slower to adopt because, for instance, in Crestview, we had a, we had a moisture problem and we had a lot of second homeowners. And the buildings were so tight, I could tell in the springtime, in April, I could walk by people who hadn't been about, been in their house for three or four months, and their return air filter, it got clogged and wasn't working, and you could see moisture on all the front of the windows. And so they're getting, the moisture isn't getting out of the building soon. I'm, I, I always like to let some other communities figure it out and see what kind of issues they might have before I'm quick to adopt things. Uh, because, you know, I think, again, I'm not, I, I would like to see that that zips, sheathing, those return air personally before I put community members in a position where they have mold, black mold.
Well, the biggest issue there, what I would be concerned about is everybody's complaining that our codes, the way they are, too strict now, it's costing more money. So if you increase, I mean, switch to the twenty-two, it's gonna just add more expense to what we're doing.
Here's another thing that's gonna happen, and Chief, maybe, are, are we considered, uh, part of the, um, just have you a second? The wild land urban interface area?
So you guys have not adopted any codes in relation to that? But like I've said before, all you gotta do is walk outside, we're in the urban interface of.
The reason why I bring that up is that's something else that they're gonna be looking at and they're talking about, like you said, hardening of homes. Uh, and I know that they're gonna fight that like crazy, but we never get past.
Well, and I was just at a conference on that, um, and you're correct, that they're, they're talking about creating a national standard around that code. The big thing, the big, the, the big impact to your community would be the adoption versus the non-adoption of that code would be insurance rates.
Yeah.
And so you, you have to be mindful of the fact that if you don't stay at least up on some of those, then you, you run the risk of putting your citizens in a place where they can't get housing.
Well, you know, that's the other thing that we talked about, there's part of that, and I talked in our, one of our recent meetings about, uh, they've recognized that the majority of households are still caught out of under insurance aid.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Um, what sort of consultation or buy-in have you had with the Planning and Zoning Variance Commission?
So I started here, and that's kind of my golden rule, is I start with the council first. So I, I meet with them on November first, um, but I did not, I, I introduced myself. And at the last meeting, I had a, I had a front row seat to watch, to watching the issues around the fact that the code requirements for, for different applications. And the fact that the staff's hands are kind of handcuffed because it says thou shall do these ten very expensive things. And this gentleman wanted to do one very easy thing, and he's been in limbo for three months trying to get all this stuff together. That's, that's what I'm really trying to work towards is, and it's good for, it's good for everyone because it's also, for instance, I'm sure you've run a public process where you have one application and you have to do three different approvals. When you go through major impact, you're able to, you're able to kind of condense all that. The other one, the other big one in your process that is, that I kinda, is annexation. Annexation is a, you have, you have very kind of set policies on annexation. Annexation is, is by statute, is a negotiation between the city council and an applicant. Now, there's very statutorily driven, thou shall publicly notice and thou shall provide this plat. But the actual negotiations are the seven of you and the applicant. And I feel like that is, again, business-friendly, you want to be encouraging, how do you bring in an applicant, how do you work with them? What can you do to incentivize? Because especially in commercial development, they're able to bring additional tax base, sales tax, et cetera, potentially to the community. And then on the housing, on the housing fees, if you don't have set standards, you can ask for things like workforce housing as part of an annexation. Uh, and there's no, you don't need to have a policy that, you know, it's, it's a negotiated piece. Because there's things that the city can do to incentivize that development. All right, Ryan, I've been talking to you long, sorry.
Hello, everybody. Um, thank you for inviting me into your meeting tonight. Let me see if I can share my screen. Um, if the host could give me access, then I'll.
She's, she's actually gonna.
Oh, wow, that was a really quick service. Okay, can people see stuff?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, I just wanted to give a quick overview, so I'm Ryan Givens, I'm from Stantec, I'm a urban designer, urban designer. And I work within our brownfields team. So whenever jurisdictions receive their EPA brownfield grant, I help get involved with kind of the reuse strategy of brownfield sites. So that's kind of why I'm here today. Um, so today's, I just wanna give a quick overview of what your grant allows and what it is and specifics on it. A little bit of what is a brownfield and a person's text. Uh, I'll go over to area-wide planning activities that is eligible on your grant. And then we can have a discussion of whether you want to proceed with an area-wide plan for your downtown area. And if so, you know, what kind of components you would like to see. So a little bit about your grant, um, you received a six hundred thousand dollar, um, brownfield assessment grant from the EPA. They last for about three years, that was awarded in October twenty twenty-one. So you're about, you have about two years left on the grant. And really, the core purpose of the grant is to assess property owners, or assist property owners in doing environmental site assessments on their property and then doing some cleanup work for those processes. But also, what's really neat about these grants is that you can use a portion of your grant for reuse planning. And there's quite a few eligible activities on the planning. You could do special studies, you know, some communities are like, wow, we really need a market study so we know really what's in this area can support. Or maybe they wanna do a parking study. You can also do site-specific planning, like say you have a large property, even in the city, that just has a lot of value and it's high priority. You could come up with some different options on, on how to reuse that. But then you can also do area-wide planning, and that is more kind of like traditional neighborhood plan or residential, there are those type of things. So what's a brownfield? Um, the EPA defines it as, you know, real property that's basically complicated by the perceived or potential presence, presence of a housing substance, including urban contamination. This usually comes into play in legacy industrial areas or older parts of town because the way that we use to build buildings or operate our industrial operations, or even like say dry cleaning, um, a lot of times those past practices led to site contamination, whether it's in the soil or it's actually in the building materials itself. So it just adds another layer of complexity to a property owner that wants to do something in an older part of town or we use an old building. And a couple of examples are, you know, you might go around town and you might see like a vacant lot, or why the heck doesn't somebody, you know, build something on that? If it's in a suburban context, there's a potential to have, let's say, like ground contamination from either adjacent uses or previous uses that may have occupied that site. So it's, there's a lot of assessment that you need to get and impossible cleanup. So that's why sometimes you'll see more work on the urban fringe that people kind of reinvesting in, in urban cores. Same thing with older buildings, um, is that you might say, oh, that's just this great old iconic building. But if you are, say, you wanna open up a, a record store or, or something like that, um, you, and you wanna improve that interior, well, there could be asbestos in that. Um, you could have lead-based paint, so once you start to, you know, move walls and everything, you are required to possibly mitigate some of those contaminants or presence. That's why it's so important to kind of understand all this, whatever the planning for revitalization, planning for growth within older parts of town. So, you know, however they create, a lot of times it's just that the business went out and then there's just not enough capital to, you know, clean up the site or anything. Or maybe there's illegal dumping, or maybe you had a natural disaster that made, you know, contaminants overflow and leach into the soil and everything. Petroleum products are usually the most common, you know, in soils, um, like just think about leaky tanks and those type of things, that all gets stuck in the soil. But then like older buildings that were constructed and maintained prior to nineteen eighty-eight building standards, you know, that's when like asbestos or like basically paint or even molds, you know, come into play. So that's true, what happens. And then on the bright side of this is just a little bit picture on what a poor property owner would have to go through in order to take a brownfield site and put it back to productive use. Usually we do a phase one, and that's more of a high-level assessment of what was the past main use on the property or in the area. And then if there is a reason to believe that there was some proven contaminating lane uses, then you would go and do a phase two. If the phase one report basically says, you know what, it's always been, you know, a cattle farm, there was really nothing around it that suggests that it would be, you know, contaminated, then you can basically proceed with other, you know, development activities. But if there is reason to believe that there was contaminants, phase two actually looks at testing of those sites, you know, whether it's in the soil or the building materials and those type of things. And then there's this whole myriad of steps a property owner would have to go through in order to, um, clean up the site, elevate the site, or those type of things. So I'd just like to share this just to show the level of complexity that, that brownfield sites have to go through just in order back to productive use. Well, luckily, for your EPA brownfield grant, you could do what's called area-wide planning. So if you have a narrative town like downtown and it has quite a few brownfields, again, it's like received, you know, environmental contaminants, um, you can address all those simultaneously through area-wide planning. And it's like any other traditional downtown or special area plan, process to that. So the typical components of those plans is looking at your existing emissions. You know, you already have, you know, your own renewable district, creative district, main street district, and also other developers that have a lot of good ideas that they're already working on. It's really important to, um, acknowledge those and then with all the area-wide planning, build off of those ideas. It's really important to acknowledge those and then all the area-wide planning will build off of those ideas. My goals are looking at your zoning standards as a baseline, you know, for this area. We also do a property inventory where we'll do more of a desktop review for readily available GIS data sets and state environmental records to assess every cap slot that's in the focus area. And then it basically tells you, you know, what sites are probable brownfields based on their property conditions and past property use. And then we have a vision and local priorities, a portion of that. That's really what we're trying to solve and what's the direction that the city or the community would like to go for in the primary area. We usually have an urban framework plan or conceptual plans that say, hey, this is where we want to be. But then we would have a series of strategies that tell you how to get there. So it's not just a lay-in use plan, it's more of a strategy plan. Have an action and then we'll have an action plan matrix at the end of it. Now, one thing that's important is that the community engagement activity should really go the whole duration of the planning process. Is, you know, if we're planning for people, you know, we need to engage them to tell us what they would like to see, you know, there. And at the end of the process, we can come up with that report for you. And a lot of jurisdictions tend to like more a five to 10-year strategy plan as the deliverable. So then they can craft their work plans and budget allocation in the future to move towards implementation. So for your, you know, as we've talked with staff and also talking with Michael, we want to identify an engagement plan if you choose to proceed with an area-wide plan, what that might look like. And we think that it should be just quite a few different ways that people can get involved. We recommend having a local working group where you have community representatives that kind of are the decision-making bodies, the recommendation body, that they can respond to the various recommendations that we've come up with along the way. And then also having this stakeholder group interviews where, you know, let's, let's talk to a handful of realtors that understand what the market is looking like, you know, in your city. Maybe it's community organizations, where do they work from, where do they see the local needs are? And then some other stakeholders that you might identify that you might speak with. Online surveys are usually always a component of this, a lot of people want to give their two cents, but they might not want to attend the meeting on that. So that's also a good way to do it. We would like to have joint work sessions with the council and then your planning commission. Because we don't, well, for decision-makers, we'd like you to be alongside us in a way rather than just waiting until the end of the night. Here's your packet, hopefully you'll be able to be one of the others checking with you at major milestones. There'd be a couple of community workshops. And then all of this would help define what the community's priorities for the downtown area. I'd be able to go from services to what the physical environment looks like, and services and incentives and all those type of things. So that's going to help us get to that. For area-wide planning, we usually have two main targets. Adaptive reuse, so fill it up empty storefronts or underutilized buildings. But then also urban infill projects that might occur on underutilized properties or vacant sites or maybe buildings that just have reached their end of their lifetime. And so that's probably kind of what our targets are. And then cities only have a handful of tools that they can do to incentivize redevelopment, economic development. So you have your zoning standards, which Michael's already working on for here, and this will help inform that. Capital projects, because if you have a functioning, well-loved physical environment, then that's going to help entice private development and go into reuse. Then we also identify programs and incentives that you might want to employ. And then finally, this is kind of one of my favorite ones, is like identifying events and traditions that bring in locals, but also invite outsiders into your community so they'll spend some money. And then if you see more activity, that's whenever investors are more likely to invest in this part of town versus, you know, outlining areas. And then finally, we try to identify near-term activities you can do. Because, you know, let's say you have a myriad of capital projects you'd like to do. Well, cities don't have a blank checkbook where they can just write that. But how can you incrementally improve that area in the short term? And then long-term, you could have investments that way, you know, you might in that area. And usually the way the structure is on these area-wide plans, again, they're more like strategy plans, is that you have a map that says this is where you want to be. But then you try to break down all the actions and different initiatives into bite-sized pieces and you put it in buckets. You know, one might be catalyst sites and which ones do you want to target for the development? You know, you might even look at what incentive, and then if you might want to provide in the area to entice locals to kind of visit the area, but also kind of elevate some areas, physical condition and functionality. So that's my big overview of what area-wide planning is. So if it's okay with you, I have a couple of questions for you. You know, my first one would be that you support the idea of area-wide planning in downtown? And if so, you can go to some other. So I'll stop talking now and I'll hear from you.
I was going to get a consensus from council, what about your idea for support to moving forward?
Yes, I have a question. I was reading about brownfield as opposed to greenfield. The cost is a little bit higher for brownfield because you have to start the cleanup from the ground up, is that, is there a lot of truth to that?
Well, greenfield sites is just, it takes out one of those unknowns. I mean, just property development is so expensive anyways, and it's like your performance, you know, are done. It's like you just don't have any wiggle or any extras or surprises. That's why people usually go on the urban fringe. Brownfields, you're always going to do those assessment studies. And a lot of times investors don't have that, a lot of soft cash upfront. So, you know, these studies could be anywhere between $5,000 to $25,000. So any way that we can incentivize somebody taking on that, that project to redevelop a brownfield, you know, that's what we'd like to identify. Hopefully that answers your question.
And Ryan, just to clarify, one of the really nice things about the EPA grant is that as part of this process, it identifies what Ryan just talked about as a resource for private, private. So private entities are eligible for the assessment, but they're not eligible for a cleanup. But at least they can get the assessment done so they know what your cleanup cost would be. That's part of Ryan Crickford's, that's part of this process is kind of showing people that they can partake in the EPA funding right now to get those studies done.
Yeah, can I respond to that a little bit?
Sure.
So yeah, a lot of times whenever communities get these grants, you know, they're offered to private developers or private property owners and developers. Sometimes it's a little bit slow to get people to take advantage of the grant activities. But whenever you start an area-wide planning process or focused planning process, people tend to get excited about it. So we can load the grant more, and then you see more people who are, oh, there's something happening in this area. So I definitely want to take advantage of the grant activities so I can advance my property for future reuse and cleanup.
Go ahead.
You mentioned the advantages of area-wide planning. What is the disadvantage? Is there any disadvantage?
I don't see any disadvantages into an area-wide planning. Because it's, anytime that we can engage with the community members to tell us what's working and what needs a little bit of help, then we can address those, you know, and come up with a plan of action.
Okay.
My only dis, I, I do have a disadvantage is if you do, you can, you can be planned to death. And I think, I, I, I'm a horrible consultant in saying this because I make money doing planning. But there are, I've been in communities where like, there is just a, I go into the administrator's desk and there's six plans sitting there. And the goal of this is really to take all this, all of this energy that you have going. And it's, to me, this is very timely. But you can be planned to death. I've seen it because people get burned out. Like I'm going to another meeting. So that's a disadvantage. But I think you have that. Sorry, Ryan.
I think it's okay, I mean, yeah, I guess I should capitalize. I would base it on what your staff's ability is to take this on, you know, because a lot of times, you know, planning staffs, management staffs are already kind of, their workload is pretty high anyways. I would just say, you know, as long as they have the capacity to take this on, I think that's probably the prerequisite.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, you and Wally. On the downtown deal we're doing with the housing and that, do we have any issue with asbestos recovery in that? Where this would come in to have them, you know, do the thing? But is there any grants for, to clean up? Is there something available? Because that could really add to the cost of redoing one of those buildings.
So the monastery that the community group was just explaining, that's the whole reason they're putting, so cleanup costs are only eligible for government or nonprofits. So as you've seen with them changing the building ownership to a nonprofit status, that's making them eligible for that EPA grant. And so that's, that's what's really key. But what's to your, but I wouldn't overlook, I mean, just a simple, getting a simple, when any, today, if you were going to do any demo in a building, you have to get a state demo permit, which requires this study. And so anyone who wants to invest and do work in their building, this is part of the process is saying, hey, we have 600, well, we have $500,000 sitting here to take advantage of getting these studies done. And maybe it's only 5,000, or maybe it's a bigger building, it's 25. But that's, they're able to get that report and the cleanup costs put in front of them ahead of time. Whereas if you don't go through this, you actually pay a private entity to come in. And that's upfront cost that you might, I mean, honestly, you get the report back, and I've seen it, I've seen a bunch of stuff I'm doing in the southeast. It's a $50,000 just to abate some asbestos that's in my house. So these, these property owners have the opportunity now to take advantage of this, of this, of these dollars for the EPA. So they know what they're getting into way ahead of time.
You know, are, are all the people that we are involved with in the buildings down there, are they aware of all this?
That's part of the reason why.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I mean, that's.
Yeah, I, I mean.
They need that information to.
Yep, and I, and I think most of the folks that we've talked to are aware of what, I mean, they, both they're property owners, so they know that they, what they got, what they got going.
My, what comes to mind immediately about area-wide planning for me is that we already have had a traffic study done that we worked with CDOT to put together, excuse me, and then we have in the works, hopefully still, a Riverwalk project. And I'm wondering how that information gets taken into account in area-wide planning? Do you just lump that all in and use that information, or do you just throw that out? Or how do you deal with those ideas?
I love looking at all your past ideas, you know, and incorporating it, building not even carrying forward that story. Because it's like people put in a lot of time, you know, on those efforts, so it deserves to go forward on it. Plus, you know, what Michael was saying, it's like people get plenty of fatigue. It's like we just talked about this, why it wasn't even done with it. And a lot of times what we do is like, you know, we'll, we'll work with staff and then the, you know, working group, and they'll identify all of those, because I'm an outsider, you know, so they'll identify what all those past planning activities that they want to move forward doing. So I feel a little comfortable with that.
Okay. The other question I have is in terms of staffing, do we need a planner? And we've lost our planner, do we need a planner in order to facilitate this?
Answer, I'll answer that, Ryan. You give me, so this is, this is part of, this is part of the reason that it's timely. Because it's, it's within the purview of what I'm looking at because of the, that we've been looking at the downtown housing. And so this is allowing me to hit one of those qualified strategies. So that's one of the, one of the reasons that this kind of rose to the top and we're discussing this is we're able to actually kill two birds with one stone because I can assist as kind of, and obviously, if you get a planner on, then they'll be brought up to speak too. But it allows me to, just under my existing contract, to take on that extra workload for the city right now.
Great, thank you.
First off, guys, thank you for your time tonight. I would support area-wide planning as long as we give deference to what Councilwoman Ogletree was mentioning, that it's not duplicating or, or causing another layer of opposition. But the way that I'm seeing it, it takes conditions we already have, brownfield conditions, and causing a way for people to approach that and also cause excitement. So it'll help infill areas of downtown area potentially and turn, turn that to something that is a lot better to look at. I support the area-wide planning from what I've heard.
The, the question that I have is that the, the planning, can that be used? Are we talking about strictly residential or can it be used for commercial purposes as well?
So what's great about combining the EPA grant and what I'm doing is that there is, I have, I, I'm ultimately responsible to DOLA. Ryan is ultimately responsible for the EPA. So we, we both have, we both have guardrails in our grants that say thou should, thou can do this, but thou can't do that. What's nice about what I'm looking at and because of what we've established with the Housing Now program and the reuse of downtown buildings, I mean, there's, there's clearly a nexus between plenty more people in buildings downtown and the impacts, parking, et cetera. And so for me, when I go back to DOLA, I say, well, you engaged in area-wide planning, I would say yes. But I was also saying, it's right here, this is a qualified strategy is how to repurpose unreutilized commercial property. So it fits within what I'm doing as well as informing the code updates that I went and ultimately get in the backend. And then that's, that's my motivation, for lack of a better way of putting it, to be part of this process from the get-go. Is that when it comes on the backend in April, May, June, I'll be well informed on how I really. Lay-in use code updates are like very technical oriented, it's, it's, it's me editing a Word document. People aren't going to get excited for me to show a red line on your plan is good. They're going to get excited for like Ryan showing, here's what the downtown redevelopment looks like if you change these setbacks or you change these types of entitlements, allows you to do this with your property. So that's, that's why combining these two types of processes together will ultimately give us a better product at the end.
The reason why I bring that up, because there's a possible commercial property that we're looking at purchasing that may get involved possibly with, you know, a brownfield. Maybe, we don't know for sure at this time. The other question I had is, we have like two years left on this grant, from what you're saying. And at six, roughly, we have $500,000 left, correct, is what you're, is what?
Yep, do we know, yep, roughly, yeah.
Roughly, ballpark figure. Now, let's say that money is not completely used up by the two-year period, what happens to that money?
That, that would go back to the federal government, but we are going to help you spend that money. Because I'll tell you, that was, if you do, area-wide planning, I've seen in other communities, people become so excited that they're like, hey, sign me up to do some of the other grant activities. Also, there's some, sometimes spin-off cleaning work, like let's say we'll do a, let's say we do a downtown plan for you. And there might be a catalyst site there, everybody wants to jump on board, where you could also divert some of your grant funds to do a little bit more work on a specific catalyst property. That's what happens a lot of times through this process.
So can any of this money be used for the actual asbestos or cleanup? No, it's just for the study, the planning, basically.
Well, and Ryan, I think it's really important there is that, and again, I'm kind of new to these, I'm kind of new to the brownfield thing. But you have to have gone through a phase one and phase two to even be eligible. So those eligible entities will have to have participated in this program to even be considered for cleanup costs.
When you're talking about phase one, where, who does the phase one and phase two before you get to the EPA?
So Ryan, want to cover that? Standtec has a certain.
Yeah, so if, say a proprietor goes, hey, great, I'd love to have a phase one done on a, on the property. They would just contact the city and then they just fill out a form, it's pretty easy. And it basically gives, you know, us as the contractor, access onto their property. And then you can, you know, assessment and produce study for them, so it's pretty, pretty easy.
And the reason why I bring that up is like, say, this potential property we're looking at, matter of fact, I just passed that on, information on to you. But it is, it gives a list of everything in Trinidad that is being looked at, and I'm not sure up to what point in time. And it shows if there's any, any contaminants removed or whatever, so I, you know, that's something that was, that was interesting. The other thing is, is that this point in time is that, have you already brought on Standtec as part of the, the? Okay, now here's the question here is that, I'm not sure what his fees are, which are part of this. Are we going to have to bring this in front of council with a resolution or ordinance to move this forward or is there services?
So my, sorry, you want me to?
No, I mean, it depends on the cost, of course, but.
Well, the, your, through your EPA award, this is an eligible cost to the grant. From where I sit, there's no additional charges from, from me. I, I executed a monthly cost. This is well within, personally, being able to leverage this and come out with a better product in the backend is all worth it. product in the backend is all worth it.
And the reason why I bring that up is like I said, because usually allocating anything over a certain dollar amount, you have to get a resolution from council, so.
Yeah. I don't want to speak for legal or Steve, but you awarded, the, Stantec was awarded through the selection, the $600,000 to be your contractor for that, and this is one of the, I'm sure in your proposal, you could include that, because I've worked with other communities.
Well, I, you know, I fully support this because, you know, we have to be able to move forward to recognize any brownfield issues that come up in the near future from anything that we try to do. So, anything else? Great. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, that was a problem. Thank you.
That was quick.
All the time we've been able to...
But we was to the point though, so.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, that, anything in the future that the council wants to bring up before we end the work session?
Multimodal law center, any updates on that?
We are going to be attending a, the TPR meeting on Thursday.
Yeah.
And we're going to be talking about exit 14, we'll discuss the multimodal project down to...
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Well, it's 5:31 and I'll end the work session. And let's take, I'll take a five-minute break and we'll come back and get into our special meeting.
Is that an executive session?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I was just going to shut down.
No action at all.
Yeah.